Can we stand for the flags, please? March salute. March's allegiance to the political path. The United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands in command. On my nation under God, invisible for perfecting justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Conacella?
Here.
Mr. Dancheck, here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Scolero?
Ms. Srazado?
Ms. Zinski?
Here. Approval of minutes, please. Someone make a motion for approval of minutes.
Motion for approval of minutes explicitly by someone.
Second.
Thank you. Correspondence, Mr. Yen. I'm sorry, go on the table, the approval of the minutes.
Aye.
We do not have any of this evening's questions.
Superintendent, Mr. Laszlo.
Thank you, Mr. Kozinski. Kickin' off, it's always nice when we have models in our faculty and staff administration for our students to emulate and we push lifelong learning. So just to kick off, I want to congratulate one of our own, Ms. Bellani, Assistant Superintendent is no longer Ms. Bellani, she's now Dr. Bellani. She successfully defended her dissertation, which I'm sure at some point should be presented to the board. On this past Thursday, so congratulations for all your work and effort. I've been told I'm out right. Notification to the public, there's been orders for parking on New Street, which is supposed to be suspended during school hours. It hasn't necessarily been enforced, but we've been having more and more congestion issues and travel back and forth with students, especially during lunches. They wanted to make sure that I got the public, yeah, out to the public that they're going to start putting flyers on windows to remind people that they're going to start forcing this again within the next week, to try and clear up issues that we're having with students transporting back and forth and entering eggs in the building. So as not to be surprised, please be aware that those signs will be enforced soon by the police and we thank them for their efforts in trying to help us control the safety for our students to and from the buildings. Academic Book Club, sponsoring in March again, the 22nd, our every other year History Fair. Science one year, history next, I'm looking forward to our History Fair this year, our students at elementary level, I don't even want to use the word competing, they'll be showing off their knowledge and obviously all invited to attend and I'm looking forward to seeing what they come up with this year, so looking forward to that on 22nd. On Friday, just to catch the board up again, I have a brief update in our weekly materials, but we had a member from the state come in to audit mainly our evaluation process and all different components. We then had an evaluation process, our principal's goals and our student growth objectives, which are controlled by district as well, to go through SGP. The gentleman was here, Mr. Klein, I met with him for about two hours, during which time he read through our SGOs. He read through our principal's goals as well, reviewed our SGP information, and he actually read redacted observations to make sure that we were in compliance with all the new state requirements. It was an interesting conversation at the end, he was incredibly complimentary, thought that we were doing good work and we had, while we did have room to grow, we weren't exactly where we should be if not farther. I want to thank all the people that helped us, our district evaluation advisory committee, certainly the board, our teachers and administrators, it's been, you know, a growth process really for three years, not just this past one, but he left very happy, we don't have anything written as of yet, but he was willing to come back and speak and he actually asked if he could share some of our materials, obviously not referring to any staff members, but share our materials as he goes and presents in all places, so I felt that was a good sign. Middle School Model Parent Meeting, our next parent forum is tomorrow, Tuesday, February 25th, in this building, in the auditorium at 7:00 PM. The focus is our general strategic plan, how the middle school fits into that, it's part of our configuration process, and what's been going on at the middle school with Ms. Yee and Mr. Sullivan and our credible staff here, as far as our curriculum instruction, what models we're looking to move to and how we think we really can strengthen the core of what's in our K-12 district. Delayed by snow, but again, I know I think Mr. Conacella and Mr. Kozinski were able to attend the State Farm presentation.
Yes.
High school, our students were, as mentioned before, involved in the anti-texting campaign and they were honored. Their work, their artwork was unveiled and will be displayed on New Jersey Transit buses and trains, so we're looking forward to that, congratulations to the students and our students in that program. Mr. Kelly's here. How are you, and obviously Mrs. Lapsada, and her class is creating that, so congratulations to all of them. On the agenda tonight is a resolution to approve, or two resolutions, the first is to approve the modified 2013 academic calendar, just as an update again, people are looking for answers as to when graduations occur, that is on our main website, under Calendar, you click on the 2013-14 graduation schedule and that will tell you what's being held, which days, etc., based on our emergency closings. We are now up against the end of the year. Based on though, the approved modified version of the calendar tonight, we are up to date, meeting our 180 requirement, thanks to staff, students, our teachers, our administrators, everyone was in Thursday and Friday, we had two equal days of instruction, and as of now we're back on track to end the year as necessary. So looking forward to a nice calm remainder of the school year. The other academic resolution is the approval of the 2014-15 academic calendar, and that obviously once approved will be up on the website so people can make plans a year out. Big one, kindergarten registration, I cannot believe we are here already, but Monday, March 3rd, which is a week from today, registration will open for kindergarten for the 14-15 school year, takes place in the high school cafeteria. From 4:00 to 7:30, registration packets available on the district website, and we're really encouraging people to register as planned and as early as possible so that we can plan appropriately with staffing and facilities. The Nutley Parent Academy also impacted by snow, was originally scheduled for Thursday, February 6th, it moved to Wednesday, March 19th, 6:30, this is on the website, in the middle school media center. This event is for parents, specifically as students here in the district, to learn to leverage the different technological tools that we now have to better understand what's going on, interact and collaborate in the education of instruction of your students. Advanced placement assessments are coming up, the AP season is rolling in. AP study sessions, which we do every year, beginning next week again, start helping make sure, ensure our students are prepared to put their best foot forward. Again, to the board, we started the instructional rounds tomorrow, two years ago, I'm happy to say that actually truly the goal has been achieved in the sense that the buildings have taken over that model. I have not been involved in preparations for instructional rounds, and they are occurring throughout the different buildings. We have multiple teachers moving, they're looking at their building and district goals, pulling evidence and then using those to develop professional development. Our upcoming visitors are Spring Garden School, Radcliffe in Washington, over the next two weeks, so looking forward to getting some feedback on them. Professional development's continuing, Language Arts, Ms. Klein is still in, working with our tier-three teachers in grades K-2. All K-6 teachers, including specification staff, as well as 7-8 language arts staff, have been included in the overview of Reader's Workshop, and most important, the administration assessments, to make sure that as a district we are completely on the same page when it comes to how we are assessing literacy and its development across the KD continuum. Given talented, Mrs. Woods-Murphy's gotten some really good feedback, I got to sit in on a few of the sample lessons and to work with the teachers, some great conversations as she works with the teachers, having shown them our lesson with students, they sit down for an hour and talk about what's going on, how that could carry out when she's not in the room. And finally, Mr. Vania and Mr. Ronnie keep work, continue to work with representatives from Cameron Fox Biological, planning and scheduling additional teacher trainings from now until June, so our teachers are continuing to develop the science program as well, being better prepared for next September. Update on the RFP that's out for our handheld wireless, again, this is a security piece that comes out of our referendum. Those bids starting to come in, we're looking to see if she's able to sit down and actually go through them as close and figure out how we can move from there, that's going through the administration committee. Some key upcoming dates for folks, Read Across America, one of my favorites, board always receives a new invitation from buildings, but want to make sure that you're invited to come in and read to the students, we have a wonderful first time ever through our athletic committee, are some of our senior and junior athletes will be going to their home schools to read to students that morning. Again, Read Across America is, it's a wonderful national event, really just promote literacy and love of reading for our young kids, and it happens to fall on, you know, Theodore Kaiser's birthday, veteran of Dr. Seuss, and it's a great event for those that can participate. Elementary guided parent programs, again, working with Mr. Villiam, thanks to her department, one of the things we've been trying to do, part of our strategic plan, is provide these kinds of workshops for parents K-12, every year, so if you're a parent of kindergarten student, there's a session designed for you, parent of sixth grade student, there's a different session designed for you. They're running a session called "Deluding Evocally and Navigating Through Difficult Emotions" for the elementary school students, it's Wednesday, March 12th at 7:00, in Washington School Auditorium. Third Half Club Tournament, March Madness is almost upon us, feels like Madness is already here. They will be taking place Thursday, March 20th through Saturday, March 22nd, we're co-mates here in this building, again, we have teams from all the elementary schools competing, it's a great deal of fun, some good sportsmanship and some great competition, so looking to see people there. And then finally, kindergarten orientation, I'm not going to read the dates, but they are up on the website, so if your parent students coming in, that information is already available on the specific building website that you're concerned were maybe attending. The only other big date coming up right now, and there's a ton of them, but next week we start our assessment. So the assessment for our high school students begins next week, we make up the files and then at that point we roll right into state testing. In the mix of that, we also have the part practice assessment that will be coming through, and the two items to spread.
As Mr. Laszlo stated, we had several bid openings last week, three as a matter of fact, on Thursday, one was the handheld wireless communication devices, the other was for replacing the section of the roof on the high school, and thirdly, for the fire doors throughout the high school building. The, we had several responders to all three bids and they are currently under attorney review. Tomorrow is the governor's budget address, and approximately two days after that, we should be receiving our state aid figures for 2014-15, which we'll then be able to make final decisions regarding the budget presentation next month. The state did extend the submission date for the budget, and along with that, they extended the date for public budget hearings. So you see, there are two resolutions on the agenda, one to change the date of our April meeting, and the other to establish the public budget hearing, so that it coincides on the same evening. So in April, we will be having our board meeting on April 48th, which is the last Monday, and the public budget presentation at the same time. The business office is currently in the midst of review audits and financial reviews and monitoring the budget.
We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy, please. Ms. Dancheck?
Hi, thank you. The academic committee met on February 18th, Dr. Bellani reviewed the academic, the initial budget proposal for the 2014-2015 school year. We also received the official CUSAC notification, February 12th, the State Board of Education, that we have certified. We also spoke about the pilot program update, we have ongoing pilot within the district for our science program, grade seven, and also this year we're going to have a world language pilot program, which will begin in the end of February and run through spring. We also spoke about the Nutley Youth Survey, Youth Survey was given to the middle school students the week of February 3rd, and the high school students will take this survey this spring. We also spoke about grants, professional development, and field trips. Thank you.
The administration committee? Okay, I'll cover. We had our latest administration committee last, I'm sorry, 18th, Tuesday. We had Mr. Power win to discuss the, some plans moving forward with the athletic department. We reviewed, I think we talked about the parking on New Street, and I don't know what, I think that's pretty much what we talked about, I don't know what else was. We talked about the CUSAC, we talked about some, the technology that's been being proposed, we talked about the radios, that we got the RFPs on, we talked about the academic calendar, and then we talked about some policies that you're going to see tonight, first and second readings. Mr. Ferraro?
The finance committee met on February 18th, we discussed the February 12th board's finance agenda resolutions, and quickly reviews financial reports, transfer, and the change in the board meeting. The 2014 and 2015 budget presentation was made. Ms. Dancheck reminded the committee of the upcoming bids for the handheld communication device on high school roof and fire doors. Ms. Yee has also discussed the February 12th bill from the state regarding the CUSAC evaluation. The committee also discussed the warehouse fire insurance claim, and that Ms. Yee reported that the claim had been submitted and approved by the insurance adjuster. And finally, the committee discussed the snow removal process that was happening over the last week around school, preparation for students to get returned back to school that Thursday and Friday.
Thank you. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulation 602 will last 20 minutes for these communications, each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on the topic has been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember, don't restate your name and address each and every time you address the board, the first person can come forward.
Good evening, Mr. President, Alan Thomas, 108, the Kindling Street Department. Mr. President, since I'm always out here to remind one to post things on the website, if it's appropriate, I come up here and thank, thank the superintendent and the staff for making sure the proposed policies are on the website this time, and I also appreciate the fact that they indicate on many of the policies what's been changed, and that is extremely helpful, it saves, I'm sure it saves the committees a lot of time in reviewing them as well. I do have just a couple of observations, not necessarily questions, and certainly not a criticism, but it's just strange, it seems to me I'm getting old, that we have to have policies on things like active shooters, mind threats, and kidnappings and things like that, but we are the leaders of which we are, and I'm glad that we have some people on the board, as well as experience, and many of our staff members, and things like safety and security, so they can look at these things. Some of the policies are intricate, some of them are not, some of them are not consistent, and I'm sure there's a reason to that, for instance, do the teachers lock and, lock with clothes and lock the windows, or do they leave the room open, and so on and so forth, and in the, shall we say, confusion of events that are, you know, are provided for, I just wonder if we're, those differences are really essential, or whatever, and that's the only thing I am really concerned about, is do we really act in accordance of policies when we're faced with the actual situations? I know that's why the training is for, typically those who are ever in services or fire and safety know how important training is, because it creates a second instinct, or a first instinct on how you react, but some of the differences are subtle, and that's, that's the only one I, I saw, and I was like, gee, I wonder why that is, and I'm wondering if that's so essential, and I don't know the answer to that, I only bring it up as a concern. Not as a criticism.
No, and I appreciate that, and we certainly appreciate you, your input, I'm sure, has made these resolutions a little more visible on the internet, and I appreciate that also, okay? When we look to review these policies, we take a recommendation from a company that we hired that is constantly looking through them, then it goes through the committee and we review them, along with Mr. Laszlo, obviously, and he's hopefully run them by some of his administration staff, so by the time it gets to us, we think we've got it pretty much where it should be, it doesn't mean that it can't be fine tuned all the time, and I was very cognizant of some of those subtle changes that you might also be concerned, safety wise. Hopefully our teachers and staff never have to use them, but I would hope that, that they are aware of what, what the policies do, what the recommendations are.
And it says a lot that we've gone into, you know, training for our own staff, our students. I know when I was a kid, I, you know, to me, a fire door was just a nice way, I mean, a break during school day, wasn't until I got older and had to actually run these things, I realized, gosh, these are really important, people need to know where they need to go, and what they need to do when the alarm sounds, and it gets more complicated as we have different events, which we have policies and there's those subtle differences, like do we allow the kids, if it's cold outside, do we allow the kids to go get their coats? You know, I can see where the coats are in the room, that's just grabbing something as you go, but we don't want kids in the middle school and the high school stopping at their lockers, I assume, if we're evacuating the building because we think there's a bomb threat or something, right? It's just those things need to be kept in mind, you know, on a building basis. But anyway, I commend the board, and I commend the staff and the superintendent for getting these things done, and I'm just grateful that we have such a terrific staff, and that I know that our kids are going to be protected by somebody should the worst happen, and that's, that's wonderful. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else wish to approach the board? If not, we'll vote our resolutions. Mr. Klein, will you read the resolution concerning Code of Ethics for school board members? Yes.
Here is all the board indication here by adoption of the following Code of Ethics as established by New Jersey School Boards Association. School board members shall abide by the following Code of Ethics for school board members. I will, number one, I will fully enforce all board rules and regulations of the state of education, and court orders contained for schools, desire changes shall be brought about only if you are legal and ethical seekers. I will make decisions in terms of the education and welfare of children, I will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the usual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by that. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer to schools, but to get my fellow board members to see and care well and well. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises, nor take any private action that may compromise the board. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interest or hard-simply groups, or to use the scruples of personal gain or for the gain of the rights. I will hold confidential all matters contained for the schools, which it disposes of needlessly injured individuals for the schools, and all of the matters, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for the schools. I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the reputation of the chief administrative officer. I will support and protect school personnel in proper forms of their duties, and finally, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and will act on complaints, act on complaints that public meetings only are for failure of the mature decision.
Second.
That's right, from what I understand, there's no vote necessary for this, we just need to read that into the record.
Do I have to read it again?
No. Next year. Now, Mrs. Prakus will be cast aware of the letter for us to sign off on, which, which you're signing off is that you're ready to understand this and you're going to be held accountable to. Moving now with the resolutions, Ms. Dancheck, will you take academic resolutions, please?
Yes, well, Mr. President, I'd like to propose academic resolutions, one through seven is written.
Sure.
Certainly, in terms of discussion. Oh, sure.
I'm sorry. About the, about the.
No, 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 that academic question.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Number seven, regardless, discussion will just some, some personal opinion as well as community input, in regards to the calendar, and stuff, with boards containing to the academic influence of that person, I feel that should be looked at a little closer, as well as, you know, the community input that I've received, there's definitely some, some, obviously, there's always two sides of the coin, but I think as a board or as an administration, we should, you know, look into that product, move forward, if you're a survey.
There has been some discussion about that, and I appreciate that, I think we'll probably, we're going to vote on this tonight, but then I think moving forward, we're going to put that in the academics committee review, to take a look, input from citizens, administrations, and obviously board members, on where we move forward with the calendar after the 14-15 year. Any other discussions? If, well, Mr. Prakus?
Mr. Conacella?
Yes.
Ms. Dancheck, morning. Yes. Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes, on one through six, no, seven.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes, on one through six, no, one to seven.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes. Administration Resolution, Ms. Russo, will you take that, please?
Yes, I'd like to move administration resolutions one through five as listed, I still move.
Second. Someone want a second, please? Discussion? If not, roll call, Mr. Prakus.
Mr. Conacella?
Yes.
Ms. Dancheck, morning. Yes. Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes. Finance Resolution, Mr. Riley, will you take that, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move finance resolutions one through twelve, as listed as seven.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Prakus.
Mr. Conacella?
Yes.
Ms. Dancheck, morning.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes. Mr. Conacella, will you take your personal resolution, number one? Thanks, Paul.
I'd like to move personal resolution. Number one is written.
Second. Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Conacella?
Yes.
Ms. Dancheck, morning.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications, again, each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within that requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me, the first person that has the, I'd like to press the board step forward, please.
Thank you, welcome to 53 Lakeside Drive, Representative of Nutley CUPAC. I love the Code of Ethics for the school board members, I wish it was extended to all district personnel, might be something to consider, and on number two, it would be also nice if included for individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing or disability. Oh, I was also curious, we had, when you had mentioned that we had room to grow, when you met for two hours with the gentleman regarding SGOs, what did he feel that we were lacking in?
Training.
Well, that's it?
The process he felt was lack solid, he was extremely happy with our documents, with our procedures, with our calendar, with every piece of paper he went through, and he read through all of our documents. In doing so, he just looked to make sure we continued training, mostly our administrators, as we keep trying to write consistent evaluations, but I think he came in looking, he's been in many districts, he represents the, almost the northern third of the state he covers, and he was extremely complimentary with not just the process and the papers, but also with how our administrators. how our administrators were communicating, what they're focusing on, the reflections that our teachers are providing. But I think it was more of a comment saying, you always have one to do.
And one last question. Is there a big gap or a big difference between the pilot park that the children will be taking and the New Jersey ASCE? Or is it basically like a similar test?
There, that's what you mean by gap. The park assessment is entirely technologically based, we're taking all those assessments on computers, and I think that would be the most fundamental jump, at least from our ASCE assessments. The state of New Jersey, unlike other states, has been adding Common Core-based questions, park-like questions to the ASCE for about three years. The vast majority of the ASCE is, is based on similar assessment, so it's, it's going to be a different format and different interface for students. But as far as the rigor, what the Department of Education is telling us, again, we have no control over the assessments, but what the DOE has been telling us is that there should not be a tremendous difference.
Okay.
So if we, if we were preparing our students for the current Core Core and Content standards, they should be fine. The biggest transition is going to be the fact that their type isn't good to write.
Which is good. All right, thank you very much.
Terry Cork, 45 Hampton Place, spokesperson for the Nutley Parenting Act Network. First of all, I'd just like to congratulate Dr. Valon Lee. She did a great job lately. That's not an easy thing to do. I, I was really excited to hear about the Writers Workshop, but I was just wondering, for all our students out there that are having trouble with the Singapore math, is there any way that we can get something like the Writers Workshop, but at the math level? Because right now, we have strategies, which is wonderful, but it only takes certain kids that go below the proficiency level. But if we have kids that are falling down in their grade point average, and say they were, they had an A one marking period, and now they're going down to a B, and they may be going down to a C, and of course, that creates a lot of anxiety. Is there any way that we can create something similar to the Writers Workshop, which could be in math class? Just think about it.
Just, just to clarify, again, the workshop training is not, almost, I think from what your question is leading to, is it, is it the workshop is intervention strategy, which it's not. It's an instructional model our teachers use in the generally classroom to teach literacy instruction in general, as opposed to a math strategies class, which is for students who are struggling for specific issues and they're pulled out to receive additional instruction, or instruction that's more targeted to their needs at that time. They're two very different things. The workshop approach, as an instructional model, can be used for any content area. When we talk about readers and writers workshop, it's simply workshop model focused on content for reading and for writing. You could have math workshop, you could have science workshop, you could have helping be workshop.
Okay.
So they are different. We did have a math evening for parents, we had a great turnout here in middle school. We had a conversation about this, and we've looked into a number of things, the first of which, and we have started planning, was more specific parent evenings that target specific grade levels. So parents of fourth grade students can come in and receive more specific information on the fourth grade program. So as far as reaching out to parents, one of the things that Ms. Martin's been putting together, we want to start moving in that direction to try and build that homeschool connection. As far as the students who are struggling, there's almost too many things to talk about right now with your question. The first is, are the grades? We discussed that in multiple meetings. People are seeing grades either go up or down. The issue is, they're comparing it to what the grades were, and what we had found, which reasons we did the program review and determined that we needed a change, was that the grades were not reflective of actual ability. So when we compared our grades, which were incredibly high, to our external scores and the schools our students would be accepted, being accepted to, and how those kids were doing when they got into college, there was no correlation. So one of the things we've been trying to do is make sure that we are accurately labeling the performance through grades. So that's, that's a whole different conversation. As far as working with students, principals, our specialists, our teachers are constantly working to figure out how we can provide different kinds of instruction to the kids who need it. What was interesting, and we are concerned with all of our students, but there seems to be this understanding out there that all of our students across the district are just struggling immensely with this new way of thinking about math. And what's interesting is we give common assessments on a regular basis, and it's not actually accurate. Our students are actually doing fairly well. We hope that through the process, that continues to grow. The biggest issue seems to be this appearance that there has been a change in understanding because of changing grading. That's actually not accurate, as far as the understanding is concerned. What the issue is, is while we've increased the rigor base in our Common Core, which the state provides and we are required to teach to, we've also accurately labeled now our performance, and that shift is still having negative repercussions as it kind of rolls down. It happened at the high school a year and a half ago, and we lived through that, only to find that our students did extremely well in applying to colleges, and we got great feedback. That is now rolling down through the grades, and it seems to be most specifically felt when it comes to math, because you're seeing such a change in instruction.
I just have a question in regards to the NJAS. Is there Singapore math on the NJAS, or?
Again, it's, we didn't take on Singapore math. Math is focused Singapore-based, but what that means is it's a way of looking at math. Same as workshop, it's a way of looking at structural practice. It's not different math. It's a way of understanding math. And what we found, again, one of the reasons, again, this was, this series was chosen by a group of 50 people, including teachers from every level in every building, administrators, parents, board members, looking through what was out there, knowing that our biggest issue, having gone through the program review, is an understanding of what math actually is doing. And our issue is, as our students have been progressing from K to 12 and up, that understanding has, for lack of a better word, gone in the wrong direction, better phrase, gone in the wrong direction. And our, our performance in math at the higher levels does not equate to what we were labeling our performance to be at the elementary levels. And so what has happened is you've had that disconnect. So we don't, we don't teach a different kind of math than everyone else is teaching in the state of New Jersey, but we approach math a specific way, and the fundamental reason is because we want students to understand what they're talking about, so math doesn't become more of a mystery as they, as they go up the grade lines.
Okay. All right. I do have a question in regards to, say, in regards to the NJAS, what is the policy of the board for a parent who refuses to have their child? What's the story with that? Because I know that that's a real gray area for many people.
It's not a gray area. It's not, it's not, it's not a board policy, it's state mandate, they have to take the test. The students, I mean, opting out as parents, basically taking students out of, out of school for that day and then for the makeup. And they need to have legitimate reason for being out, as they do for any day, they need to call them and the rest. I don't recommend that. I know it seems to be being pushed around. We're not making a statement by, by, by taking that test. We'd much rather know where our students are, again, especially with the practice part, making sure we have a clue how that runs here, so we can do our best for forward. Exposing our students to rigorous assessment is not necessarily a bad thing.
Okay. And in regards to the park test, if you're going to have to do that with computers, how is that going to happen? Do you have any idea?
Well, we've been working closely with Mr. Beemeister, Ms. Ullabine, the board. We've made some significant investments in technology going back even before park was really on the horizon. The state gives guidance as to how districts can prepare based on how many buildings you have, how many students you have, what your grade spans are. And based on that recommendation, we're already well off when it comes to our technology needs. But we have, and this is actually a report out from Mr. Scholera last meeting, we, every month, we look at our technology needs within the board and our budget, and based on our plans for this year, we should be not only minimally ready, but we should be well prepared when the park actually comes in for real. My biggest concern, not necessarily for students in Nutley, but students in general, is that normally you have written prompts for younger kids. Most of those kids, other than texting, in which case they're, they're incredibly quick, well, actually skilled typists. And so it's going to be a big shift for everyone else, who are now typing essays and written responses, and not writing them. As far as the rest, I'm pretty confident, I mean, my, my pre-K students here, because we've been in those classrooms, our pre-K students are extremely adept at using the computer, mouse, and iPads as well. It's more a matter of, will our network house it? And again, we've been investing in that for a number of years, and do we have the number of devices in the internet?
Okay. I just have one more question in regards to, I know that I brought it to the attention of this board several months ago, in regards to overcrowding, overcrowding with specials, and I'm back to ask if you could please think about increasing the number of, of teachers in that area. I mean, we have, you know, we, we just have large numbers in these schools, such as Lincoln School, that has a great deal of special ed students and that impact the specials, and it makes it really hard for, for anything to get done. I mean, it's, I mean, we can't critique that teacher, I mean, they're doing the best they can under those circumstances, but even if we had aides that would work on, not individual aides that are assigned to particular students, but aides that could help, or additional teachers that can help in that area. I mean, we have some situations where there's not enough materials for them, or if it's an art class, or whatever it is. So I really think if we can just look at helping them, because it is a very large special ed population that goes into those classes, and we want to make it a positive mainstream experience, because those kids are there a long time, seven years that they're there. So it's, 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 some of them are there from preschool up to sixth grade, so they're there a long time. So that's their home. So we want to make sure that, that that's really important, and we'd really appreciate it if you could please think about that during the budget season.
I feel we have to know that we think about that every day.
I know.
It's more of a, and to be fair, and we, our long-range facilities planning committee was, that, I mean, those issues of overcrowding are more issue of facility than our staff. And so part of our issue is that we, and many times do have enough staff, and simply have no more rooms to split these classes.
Right, that's an issue.
But so we are, we are always looking at both, and you've heard me speak multiple times, especially when I go to the PTOs at the elementary level. While class size is not a requirement, I certainly think it's an issue that we have to take seriously, and unfortunately, right now, our biggest challenge is space.
Okay.
So we, we absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board?
Mr. President, Alan Thomas, same address, please. The town commissioners have seen it's been approved for using the high school authority. He's having a forum on the development of the Rose property next month. I'm wondering, is the board going to attend? Is the board on these committees? If not-
Yeah. We're definitely going to attend, but I think we'll start something to say.
Well, I, I have, I speak with commissioners on a regular basis, and most recently was Commissioner Evans. I think he's the one who spearheaded the public meeting at this point. The board will certainly be involved. I think he's about to be able to answer questions specific somewhat to what Ms. Quirk just raised, which is the issue of overcrowding our facilities and what impact development could have on them. So we've been in constant collaboration and communication with them.
Will you be taking a public position on? Well, is this, suppose they come up with a, a plan to build a thousand units there, residential units? Is the board prepared to say, oh, no, you're not, or?
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll voice our opinion on anything that's going over there. We, we have been in constant touch with them. Most of our board members deal with, with the commissioners on, on other levels, so they know of our concerns. We did make it clear in some letters to different organizations in town, zoning boards and such, on, on taking a look at any type of development going down the road. We are certainly concerned about the Rose property, and we'll be there to speak up and see what's coming out. When, when they get down to the final plans, we will be involved in that undertaking.
I appreciate it, Ms. Kozinski, but when they come up with final plans, then what we say is-
Before we get to final plans, we will have our input. It's, it's going to be a tax issue, it's going to be a money issue, it's going to be a development issue, and we will have to be involved in the process all along, and I know we are already. Back to Mrs. Quirk's discussion about the technology. I'm, I'm sure you've noticed quite a bit of our technology budget has been, been up quite a bit lately, and that was to bring us up to our standards that we're looking to meet when the park comes on board. Anyone else wish to be here? All business to come forward, board? Any new business to come forward, board? I would like to bring up one piece of-
Mr. President? I'm sorry. Did I just jump in?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm not wrapping up.
The only thing to expand on Mr. Thomas's point is, I guess, the other question is if there's going to be more than five of us who need the sunshine at the meeting.
We will get a head count on who's going to be there before the meeting. I think it's March the 7th.
You are physically allowed, I mean, you all love one another, to physically be in the same place, but you won't be acting as the board, might as well. Well, we may have some representation. Again, this is the commissioners' meeting, might as well.
I understand.
So, so we won't be acting as the board, so we shouldn't have to worry about that.
We'll get a head count. Anything else? Back to the new business. I certainly wanted to thank our staff. I see Mr. Nicoletti's here, and Karen and her staff on the snow removal, but it, it should be very important to talk about Commissioner Scott Pelley and Commissioner Tucci's help that we received. Commissioner Scott Pelley's team came in with huge bucket loaders, cleaning a lot of the space around the schools, very, very helpful to us, and I publicly want to thank both those departments, along with our own department who went above and beyond to try to get things squared away. I want to thank everybody. Where the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10-4-12. Now therefore, we resolve that the Board of Education resets the closing session at this time to discuss student math. We have further resolved that the results of this discussion will be public by inclusion on the agenda of the subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, for when the reason